A quorum has been met with nine members present. Ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. The agenda is approved. In accordance with the State Government Ethics Act is the duty of every planning board member to avoid conflicts of interest. Does any planning board member have any known conflict of interest with respect to any matters coming before the planning board today? If so, please identify the conflict and refrain from any participation in the particular matter involved. No disqualifications. Are there any changes to the minutes? Then a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting?
It's fine.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Alright, the minutes are approved and adopted. There's no old business carrying over today, so we'll move directly into new business. The first item we have for new business is PB 1614, Currituck County Large Residential Structures. Request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 4 Use Standards, Chapter 5 Development Standards, and Chapter 10 Definitions and Measurements for Single Family Detached Dwellings That Exceed 5,000 Square Feet. And I'll ask staff to present.
Here, other PowerPoint up and running.
Okay, sure. Take your time.
You guys know the history about this, and if you want to refresh, or it is in the stack of course, but this is something that we've been, the county's been dealing with. We found references to it in 2006 land use plan, and you know, getting it started. I guess it was really initiated maybe the second, or this, this time has been initiated with a directive in November of last year from the commissioners to take a look at this, at this issue. So, we're gonna go real briefly through a little bit of the timeline, and then we're gonna look at some images of house size comparisons that we saw. We've seen ones we presented to you all at the work session last month. And then we are gonna go through the text amendment piece by piece, where hopefully we'll break it out into digestible pieces, because there is a lot of information, and it could have some implications on it. But, we're gonna look through the use standards, and this, once again, this is, would just be for single-family homes exceeding 5,000 square feet. We're talking about setbacks and buffering, changes, proportionality, and parking. Well, sorry, we'll get to that. And then, the single family remote district having special standards for that. We're gonna talk about some off-street parking, and then some changes. And we're also gonna have some images and some diagrams in here to hopefully illustrate some of our points. So, the April 18th work session from the commissioners, these are kind of the outcomes of this. They've requested local legislation to require life safety features in large structures, which we told you that we would not be able to do that until next year, the next legislative session. Increase off-street parking standards and better signage about illegal on-street parking. Develop some compatibility standards. We have a threshold, when are those compatibility standards triggered? Larger lot size, or increased side setbacks, larger lot size in off-road beaches, screening for outdoor uses in refuse areas, and proportionality. New houses similar in size to existing neighbors. We did not get any direction from the commissioners for either an overlay district, where we basically, we would group larger houses together, and we did not get any strategies to implement on secondary impacts such as noise ordinance, or revision to lighting standards, and no revision to our solid waste regulations. So on that, we're gonna kind of, I guess, set this, set the stage here with looking at some houses, some pictures of houses. And this is, this issue basically impacts the beach, the beaches, both the Corolla and the off-road area. Very minimal impact on the mainland, so we, these are all gonna be beach houses we're looking at. And these are about 150% of, you know, one size. We got a 4,000 square foot house here on the left, and then on the right is a 6,000 square foot house. About 150% of the 4,000 square foot house. And you can see, like, if you just look at them, they look very similar, but you take a few minutes and you can look at the bulk of the house on the right. It's got a lot more gables, it's got a lot more, just things going on. The facades are, you have several different levels of the facade, the front facade, a lot more roof pitches, different roof pitches. So that bulk of that house on the right is significantly different than the bulk of the house on the left. Same thing with these two, where you can see, you know, the house on the left is very, it's got basically three levels, but you can see the house on the right, how much the different levels stand out than the one on the left. And this is probably the most dramatic one. You see, you know, basically, just under 5,000 square foot house, right next to it, just under a 20,000 square foot house, and that's pretty dramatic. But that 20,000 square foot house is also set further forward, towards the beach than the other one, so that's also adds to the dramaticness of the photo. And also here, this is, this is just giving you some perspective. The smallest house there is about a 2,500 square foot house, then the one up there, about a 5,000 square foot house, a 10,000 square foot house, and then right around a 20,000 square foot house. So this kind of gives you some perspective, an idea of the difference impact that these sized houses could make if they were all lined up in the same neighborhood, and just how, the visual differences that that would, how that would impact a neighborhood. So, let's walk through this piece by piece, and there's some minor changes that we did not include here, that it's in your staff report if you want to follow along, but we'll have to make some housekeeping changes as far as reference numbers and different things like that, that we don't have in the, in the presentation. So, in Chapter 4, under Household Living, we would add this caveat to single-family detached dwellings, and that, "Single-family detached dwellings that exceed 5,000 square feet of living area shall comply with the following standards." The first one will be the side setbacks should be a minimum of 25 feet. The second one will be storage areas for refuse containers in the, the Outer Banks single-family, Outer Banks and single-family remote districts shall be screened in accordance with the section, or screening section. And then, C would be the ground level outdoor gathering areas that total more than 1,000 square feet would be required to be screened from the adjoining properties with a type So before we start discussing this, Ben's gonna show you an as-built example of this, and then we can, you know, go into discussing those parameters if you'd like, hopefully.
I can still get to it. Of course, the link wouldn't work. We tried it ahead of time.
We did. It worked, it worked in Ben's office.
So, you should have the ordinance in front of you, so you can look at this, so what we're talking about now is the concept of an increased side setback, screening for outdoor activity areas or trash receptacle areas. And is that it? I don't, yeah. Those are the items we're gonna, we're gonna kind of kick around. So what, what I want to show you is, this is an actual lot in the Wellhead subdivision, which Wellhead is a subdivision in the beach, in the Corolla area, that has 20,000 square foot lots. It has county water, but it does not have wastewater service. So you have septic systems in these lots, so that's why they tend to be a little bit bigger. This is not an oceanfront lot, this is a, a house that was built recently. It's on Wellhead Drive, which is, I think, the second street end from the ocean. To the north of this, you see the formal Mackerel Street right-of-way, that's now converted to a stormwater feature and a walkway. So essentially, what you have on this particular 20,000 square foot lot is you have three other lots that adjoining it, or abut it, I should say. Lot 27, Lot 24, and Lot 25. All three of these lots have houses that are much smaller than 5,000 square feet, and we'll see, we'll see that image in a second. But, so the question is, if, if somebody wanted to build a house that was greater than 5,000 square feet, and we just picked a lot in Wellhead, because you, you see those sized houses in this subdivision, can you do it? Can you meet the setbacks? Can you do the screening? Can you even meet the parking, which we'll, we'll get into parking a little bit later? So the short answer is, yes, you can do it. With these, with these new standards in place, that we've, we've shown you, at least on a 20,000 square foot lot in Wellhead, you can still build this 11-bedroom, 6,000 square foot structure. Now, I'm not talking, we haven't done proportionality yet, so we're gonna come back to that. We're just talking buffering and setbacks. So what you can see is, first of all, there's a, they actually have about 26 feet of side setback in this site plan, so you see there, you can meet the 25-foot setback. On the south side, they have about 27 feet of side setback, so again, they're able to comply with that 25-foot setback. Disclosure on this, this was previously a corner lot, so this particular lot is 110 feet wide and 22,000 square feet. If this were an interior lot, it would only be 100 feet in width. So if this were an interior lot, you could still do this house, the house would have to be a few feet narrower, narrower on each side. So I just want to say, that the 25-foot setback is a big setback, but in terms, if you have a little bit of land, it's still would work, it just would've made the house two or three feet on each side, a little narrower, and perhaps a little deeper. The other thing is, we talked about in the ordinance, if you have outdoor activity areas, you would have some sort of buffering from adjoining, from abutting properties. So again, you've got the three lots that abut around the corner here, so when they establish the outdoor gathering area or activity area, it's more than 1,000 square feet, so they get tripped into the buffering requirements. What that means is, they gotta put landscaping between that outdoor gathering area and the adjoining properties. Now, if you're on adjoining property and you're on the second level, obviously you're gonna be a C down into their outdoor gathering. I mean, there's, there's no way around that. But, in terms of using an adjoining property, and the house beside you has an event, or a wedding, or whatever it is in the outdoor gathering area, you're at least gonna have some ground level screening between the two properties. That's a type B buffer, so essentially, in this case, you can see right there is where the type B buffer is located. Not a whole lot of planting, and again, we'll show you an arrow. In this particular instance, actually, the property already has vegetation there, so in this, this instance, there's enough, it appears to be enough vegetation just to credit that buffer, they wouldn't actually plant anything, they would just not have to tear anything down. So again, we think, meeting the buffer requirement for these larger houses, we think is, is generally reasonable. It's not gonna require you to landscape the whole lot, just the section of the lot where the outdoor area butts adjoining properties. The other thing I want to point out real quickly, and we're gonna get back to this, but off-street parking, the new, the new ordinance does require more parking, and it will require more impervious area. So one thing we looked at is, and again, we'll come back to this, but in terms of the parking, we think it will increase the impervious coverage, but in this, in this case, they were at 29% lot coverage with this sized house. They could redesign the parking lot, as we're gonna show you, and it would add about 250 square feet of impervious coverage, but they, then they would put them at 30% lot coverage, which is actually the max lot coverage. So again, in this example, they would've been able to meet the new parking requirements and not have a lot coverage issue either. Now, if the new parking requires, the bigger the house gets, the more parking you're gonna put in, so the more lot coverage you're gonna have. So there, there may be instances where, with a bigger parking lot, it may either reduce the size of your house, or it may force you into, into doing, you know, decking instead of concrete, or other types of things, and get to, to make the lot coverage work. So, again, if we're breaking this into bite-sized chunks, this is just a site plan that shows you how larger setbacks, buffering, would, would impact a real site. And I guess the question for the planning board is, do you wanna talk through any of these elements, or just kind of keep going through the presentation and get the big, the full picture?
Any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I just had a quick simple one, with lot coverage for parking, the, the pervious-type concrete, and all other credits for that kind of thing?
There are, there are. Yeah, you, you can get credits for using alternative materials, correct, so.
That was very similar to the question I was gonna ask about using gravel or other materials instead of solid concrete, would that change the?
It does, and there's, I don't remember exactly, but, you know, if you, if you use a truly porous material, you, I think you get like a 50% lot coverage credit, whereas if you use like, some sort of semi-porous material, you get like a 35% lot coverage. So it's kind of structured based on the technique you use. But yeah, the lot coverage actually isn't, I mean, if you're right around like 30%, it's not that hard to get it down under 30.
So the reality is, if they were to build a slightly bigger house, they, that would require greater parking, they could use a less impervious surface to meet that requirement.
Correct. And they have these bigger side setbacks, so they're already creating more open area on the sides anyway, so.
Can parking fit into the setback?
Parking has a 10-foot setback. The side setbacks are for buildings and structures.
How does the, the driveways that you see at the beach, with the concrete pouring in, in their left gap where sand fills it in, how does that, how does that play into that? Is that a?
Like the webs?
Yeah.
I mean, they're supposed to, when they-
Just take the actual part of the concrete that's there, how does that work?
You mean, in terms of like, the, the pavers, or?
The foundation coverage?
Um, if they had pavers, or they had like porous-
Not pavers, you know, at the beach, a lot of old driveways used to be with holes left in it.
Yeah.
It was filled in with sand.
I mean, if it's got holes in it, then you don't count it as impervious, I don't think. Right? I mean, I don't, I don't know.
I wouldn't think so.
You're talking about the ones like, with the one inch holes all through it?
That, or some of them are kind of X patterned.
Like those cob, but yeah, in, in the, in the stormwater manual, you can, I can't remember the call, there's like cobweb kind of paver things, like, there's a credit, there's a credit for that, for imperviousness. So, for example, you may get a 30, I think a 35% credit for, so if you had 100 square feet of that stuff, you would only count 65 square feet as impervious area. I'm really simplifying that.
Like two of three spaces, say if it's three, they'd get?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've got one question for you, Ben, on this. We're talking about Wellhead, and so we're talking about paved roads, and we're talking about actual driveways, whether, whatever the surface is, is different. Again, this is one of the real differences between the paved area and the remote area up in the off-road area, because even though we have to show on our lot, an area large enough to park our vehicles, we don't have to show, our, our, the existing actual parking spot doesn't exist. It's just, you park in the sand.
Correct.
And so when you're talking about, for these large structures, and you're talking about enlarging the area that you park in, then you're talking about going over the sand dune, you're talking, with the vehicles, you're talking about parking them basically anywhere there's a spot to park. So you don't have, this is the square that you park in. And, so that makes a really difference, again, between the developed, or the, the paved area and the off-road area.
It is, I mean, that's, that's, that's right. There's, it's an, it's an exercise on paper in the off-road area. You've got to, you've got to accommodate for parking, you've got to show it, but now, how people actually park, I don't know. Probably wherever they want to.
They park anywhere they want to on the, you know, I mean, and it's on, it's in the sand.
But you may, you probably have some of that, I'm gonna guess, in Corolla, too. I suspect they, everything probably looks nice and neat on the plan, and I, I don't know how they actually position the cars, but, but it is an exercise that you have to go through now, and if, if we did require more parking, you would still have to go through that exercise of showing it.
Yeah, you'd have to show the space, but you wouldn't actually show the parking, and that would also mean that they could, they could end up having a lot more parking on the property, especially once you start talking about these really large structures, than what is designated on the plan.
Yes, we know, like, when we're, when we're talking about parking, even off-road or even in Corolla, where, you know, people are gonna park, at the end of the day, people are gonna park how they want and where they want when they come on vacation, and, you know, even having marked spots or whatever in Corolla doesn't necessarily mean they're gonna use it, and having areas designated on a site plan. So that's just one of those things that, you know, we have to try to take into account and allow for extra space, but we know, it's really, it's gonna be hard to, to get a handle on exactly how people are gonna park, or regulate that.
And, and like I said, I just wanted to put, point out the difference again between the off-road area and the paved road. I mean, I know on my house plans, because I happen to have two lots, I use the vacant lot as my driveway and, you know, for excess parking, but the actual designated on my, on my plan that was approved by the county, it's completely full of trees. So I don't come up on that side of the property, and it's also for, for protection of the property, because the backside of the ridge is, is more fragile, and so it would destroy the, the maritime forest area that's in there. So that's, you know, a real difference, too. And I know what you're talking about, you know, when you get your vacationers there, they park wherever they can squeeze their car in at, and oftentimes, it's in that side parking. Now, one question I do have is on the side setbacks, is that area allowed to be parking?
Park, parking has a 10-foot setback from the property line, so yes.
From the front property line, but does it have a-
From the sides as well.
From the sides also.
Correct.
So if you go 25 feet, you could have the 10-foot setback.
You could get some parking in there.
As well as you could have a line of parking on the two sides.
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions for staff?
As far as camera regulations on an oceanfront lot, regardless of whether it's in the full drive area or Corolla, what is the distance undisturbed that has to be required for the camera setback? Isn't that based on square footage?
It is, there's, there's, there's structure setbacks based on the square footage, so if it's less than 5,000, I believe it's 30 times the erosion rate. And then there's another, like, the next, maybe the next level's 5,000 to 10,000, I don't remember exactly, and say it's like 60 times the erosion rate. And, and once that's put in camera setback, you, you really can't do structures in it. Now, I still think you can do some accessory type things, and maybe a pool with C task.
Can you put parking in that area?
What's that?
Can you put parking in that area? Or is that considered a disturbance?
I think it is. I think you probably could put parking in that area.
Would you add a default because it's an in-between structure?
Yeah.
That could be an alternative.
I know there's-
If it's allowable.
Yeah.
To placement of parking.
But I mean, you could, yeah, you could use the camera setback, possibly for parking, but certainly for, a lot of these big houses get kicked into stormwater plans, you certainly could try to use it if the topography works for your stormwater planner. So the things I would leave you with on this, I think the importance of this lot, if, from what the staff's proposing, and the board may want to look at other things, but, number one is, I think screening an outdoor gathering area is not difficult at all, and I think that's just, that's a, that's a row of landscaping. I also think, I want to give you the, think about this, the side setbacks of 25 feet are really big. That puts 50, 50 feet of lot in the side setbacks for the buildings. The advantage of that is, is from a public safety standpoint, you get a lot of separation in, in the event of a fire from adjoining house. The other advantage is, from a use standpoint, is if I live beside a big house, they're just gonna be that much farther from me. So again, you get some use and public safety separation. But now, the other thing to consider, when you have 50-foot of the lot width, put into setbacks, you know, if you have 100 feet wide lot, 100-foot wide lot, you only have 50 feet of billable area. Now, if you had a 70-foot wide lot, and you've got 50 feet in the side setbacks, you know, you essentially, you can't build a 5,000 square foot house, or larger. So, and I'm not saying, practically speaking, we probably won't see a lot of 5,000 and 6,000 square foot houses on 70-foot wide lots, but there might be a few out there, though. So I just want to put that out there for the planning board to understand.
Am I correct in saying that the type B buffer that has to occur around these gathering areas, does that have to be at the property line, or can it be adjacent to that?
It's at, it's at the property line. Now, if the board wanted to consider it making it adjacent, you could do that, but we just referenced the typical buffer, perimeter buffer section, which puts it at the property line.
Do we need to add any language in there on C that says it needs to be at the property line, or, because it doesn't really specifically say?
I think it references you, references, I don't have it in front of me, references you over to the, the type B buffer requirements, which is in that landscape section, if I'm-
Oh yes, on the page before, it's section 5, 2.
Yeah, so I think that, that, that's probably on the perimeter, so.
I'm probably gonna see that above it.
And that's where you can get credit for existing vegetation and all that.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so we'll keep, keep moving.
So part D of, of this new definition, or this new resident dwelling type, this is, I think we're gonna get into a lot of discussion on this one. We talk about, it says, "Total living area shall not exceed 150% of the average living area, square footage of a single-family detached dwelling on a budding lots." So essentially, if you've got an empty lot, that you want to build a greater than 5,000 square foot house on, we look at the two, or any, the two on either side of it, and anybody that is budding, any parcels that are budding it, on, you know, touching it, we've got, we defined a budding in our, in our ordinance. So if you share a corner or a property line, if you're touching that parcel at all, the size of your house is gonna be factored into that 150%, which is why we showed you those pictures earlier, of about 150% between the, the two types of houses. So then, and Ben has another example here, the links aren't working, of proportionality in a neighborhood, in, on the, regarding that same property earlier, where he used the site plan.
So this, this is the whole proportionality things, and to answer a question that the board asked at the last meeting, somebody asked is, I think they were kind of asked it in reverse fashion, could you, if you had big houses, could you require the empty lot to build a big house? And the answer to that is no. That would violate federal fair housing law, so, not oddly, but governments can limit the maximum size of residential houses, but we cannot create a minimum size for residential house. So that was, because it could be deemed, you could be deemed to do that as a way to discriminate against certain people living in your community, so.
This is the same.
Yep. Yeah, but you're not, but the difference is, and I don't, not getting into philosophical debate, but in this case, you're not discriminating against a protected class, whereas in other instances, you may be deemed to discriminate against a protected class.
So, in all the subdivisions in the county, they have only maximum size house requirements, not minimum house size?
Covenants can, covenants aren't-
Okay, I'm just making sure that it's all in HOA.
It's just, it's just the government that's subject to that, not, not private HOAs, so. That's, that's just the fact. The bottom line is, we can't create a zoning ordinance that requires a max, or a minimum size house. Now, if, if, obviously, if the board doesn't agree with this, you don't have to have a maximum size requirement, or, either, so, but you can. So on this map, it's gonna be a little hard to see, but right here, this is the house we just looked at on the as-built survey. It's actually built. So to walk you through this, if this proportionality requirement had been in effect, when, when this person came in to get their building permit, so we're gonna say this lot was vacant, this table up here on the left side of the screen tells you the limits that would've been created for their house. So in this, in this, so this lot abuts these three properties. It does not abut these properties up here, because there's an intervening property owned by the county. We've got three abutters, and you can see in this Wellhead subdivision, these three abutters actually, and we just randomly picked this, we didn't go out and try to find, we just picked a site and, and worked through it. Actually relatively small houses, even for Wellhead. You've, you've got a 1,700 square feet, 1,600, and 2,500, so you really have a budding houses that are relatively small for this subdivision. In this particular case, if this proportionality were in effect, and, and this entity came in to build this house, they, if, if we had 150% proportionality in our ordinance, they would've been limited to basically a 3,000 square foot house. I'm not gonna repeat these, but you can see, depending on what you do with the proportionality has an impact on, on their house size. has an impact on, on their house size. But remember, the one caveat is, is the proportionality only applies if you build a house over 5,000 square feet. So if you do this test and you find that because of all the houses around you, you have these kind of limiting square footages, you can always fall back and build a 5,000-square-foot house. So in any circumstance, you could always build a house that big. So that, now we just say, that's like, for example, Duck, Naggs Head, Dare County, they all just have caps. So if you build a house on one of those places, you're going to get capped around 5,000 square feet. Done. What this proportionality does, it probably creates indirectly a 5,000-square-foot cap if you have small houses around you. However, flip the scenario a little bit, and let's say that today, all these are built, and they'll say the board adopts this ordinance a month from now. And the owner of this 1,700-square-foot house on this lot, they sell it, and of course, they move the house off the lot, which happens a lot, and now we have this as an empty lot. If you run this through the proportionality requirements, assuming this is the empty lot, you can see up here, if we settled upon the 150%, you'd be able to build a 5,188-square-foot house. And of course, you, you can tweak the proportionality number to whatever makes sense for the board, but, but you can see, and let's say again, that this house here, if they came in and built, we'll say we have 150%, and they build a 5,188-square-foot house, and the next time you come in and you build this house, if this one gets remodeled or rebuilt, and they're going to have a 5,000-square-foot house, a six, a two, an empty lot, which doesn't count for anything, and that's probably about a 4,000-square-foot house, four to five. So then this house, again, rolling the proportionality in, is probably going to be able to get up to 6,000 or 7,000 square feet. So the point being, if you have this proportionality in effect, as a, as a subdivision like wellhead or anywhere continues to redevelop or add bigger houses, you'll begin to see newer houses become bigger, but it's always going to be related to what's around the house.
Has that particular house caused issues?
This house here, not to my knowledge, no. They just got CO'd, so it really hasn't been operating long, but, I mean, not to my knowledge, no.
Well, it also depends on the lot size.
Well, these are 20,000-square-foot lots, you get a little more room in these.
Oh, yeah.
Again, we could, you know, we could have probably picked a handful of lots that maybe were 10,000 or 15 or something. But I think the point is, this is just generally going to show you, in principle, how this could work if it were incorporated into the ordinance.
But the proportionality, it doesn't kick in until you're larger than 5,000 square feet.
Yes, correct.
So they, they could have done 5,000 instead of 6143.
Correct.
And do you take, are you using the, the baseline where you're going 150 whatever percent over, are you taking the largest house that abuts the property?
The average of all the houses.
The average of the, of three or four, whatever's abutting it.
And that's the average of the living area of the abutting houses. The reason we have to use living area is because that's a term that the tax department uses to define square footage. So really, the only way I can go back and find square footage is for houses in this county is through the tax records. So we're basically going to take the average living area, show it on the tax records, and that'll give us a number, times whatever it is, 1.5 or 1.75, and there you go.
So I got two questions, really. One, if there's, if you're building a house and there's empty lots that abut you, you're not limited to whatever, basically, because you're the first one there.
Yep.
All right, so how does this, how does this apply to like the four-wheel-drive area? I mean, have we looked at that area and how this is going to relate to that?
It would, it would apply in the same manner. Now, I don't have a map I can show you tonight that pulls out lots and goes through this, but there's one more, one little piece of that that Lori's going to talk about in a minute, but there is, there is a lot size that's attached onto this for the off-road area. But yeah, the same, same principle would apply up there. And now, and just to give some context, right now, just under 7% of the housing stock in the paved road area exceeds 5,000 square feet. And I think around 3% of the housing stock in the off-road area exceeds 5,000 square feet.
You have all that, all.
We do.
Data in the, in the staff report.
So it's, the point is, it's probably going to come up less in the off-road area than it will in the paved road area. And if you, depending on how you look at percentages, it could come up not, really not that much at all anyways.
Seems odd, you get three vacant lots right in a row, and somebody buys the middle lot, builds a 20,000-square-foot house. What about the two on the sides? Is the owner going to be able to sell those lots now?
Sure. Might make it easier if somebody wants to build a 20,000-square-foot house.
Maybe, yeah.
It's good, it's good for your proportionality.
Sure, yeah. Just do.
I mean, it's just, it's just the best way that we could think to, to have some context to size restrictions, because the board commissioner said they will not cap house size across the board, they're, they're not going to do it. So this was the only alternative that we could really figure out that created some proportionality.
Yeah. Given some compatibility issues, this was the, I guess we got the most positive response about moving forward on a text amendment from them about having some kind of compatibility regulations for large houses.
I, I got a question. If you, if you're the first one on the block and you're 20,000-square-foot lots, given the standards that are being proposed, what's the largest house you can put there?
If you're the first one on the block, it would be, well, that's a good, that's a good segue. So we have a gentleman that, that helps us with things, Ed Cornet, who lives in Crawley. He actually did a model. And I'm going to, this is real complicated, but I'm going to go ahead and pull it out. So essentially, if you had a 20,000-square-foot lot and you're the first on the block, and he put in, he put in constants in this, so he, he's entered dimensional requirements, septic system loading capacity, stormwater requirements, and what he says, and again, this isn't taken into the effect that you may want an aesthetically pleasing house, this is just squares with a bunch of bedrooms in it. But he says if you had a 20,000-square-foot house based on this model, and you're the first one in, you could conceivably do a 9,000, if you had a 20,000-square-foot lot, a half-acre lot, you could conceivably do a 9,000-square-foot house with 14 bedrooms. And you could fit all the wastewater and all the parking under this model. So to answer your question, on the half-acre lot, that, that's your 9,000-square-foot house and 14 bedrooms, probably the biggest you could do conceivably.
Well, I got a slightly different question. How, how does the, the big homes versus the traditional or average-sized homes, what's the difference in like revenue for accounting on taxes and all that? What, what does, what does that weigh in? Most of the beach is mainly rental. Is that, does that create more tax base? I mean, obviously it does because it's a bigger structure.
Yeah.
But I mean, how, is that very minute? What, what is that?
It's, I don't, I don't know that I can even answer that. I mean, it's, it's, so the revenue streams the county can collect is a portion of sales tax, which is where you spend money. Now, I could argue that people in smaller houses maybe go out to eat more and things. You get occupancy tax, which is a percentage of the rental amount, and then you get a property tax. So, you know, bigger houses probably have, they probably cost more to build, and they probably have higher weekly rental rates, so you probably get more in those revenue streams. Sales tax, I'm not really sure about. Some folks say the bigger houses tend to eat out less and things. I don't, I have no evidence to know if that's true or not.
But then if they're holding events there, you have to factor in any sales tax and things like that, that the event is going to generate, what?
Does that factor in if they're having events there?
Yeah, I mean, they had, they, they would have to have a cater, would create a bill, and it'd be sales tax on that. Now, I guess the challenge would be if the caterer's from Dare County. I'm going to guess the sales tax probably goes to Dare County, but.
That, that 9,100-square-foot house, is that one floor or two, or, did, did he say how he broke that up?
It's, it's three.
I got you.
Three floors. It's a pretty neat model.
Yeah, it's got a lot of info.
It does. It'd become an interesting way to like, I don't know, it's just, it's an interesting model he did. I won't swear by its accuracy 100%, but he, he did a pretty good job with it. So you just plug in the setbacks and then the weather parameters, and it spits out a house for you.
Pretty cool.
But it doesn't take into like the lot individuality or, you know, any kind of aesthetics or anything that, you know, so it's very, it's generalized and it maximizes everything. So it gives you a good idea of, of the, the one end of the spectrum.
You guys want to keep, keep going and?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the last requirement in this particular segment of the amendment would be that in the off-road area, it can be only located, a 5,000-square-foot house or greater could only be located on lots that exceed 120,000 square feet of lot area. And the lot area would exclude any required camera setbacks and camera wetlands or 404 designated wetlands. So this would essentially kick these 5,000 or greater square-foot homes to larger lots. 120,000 square feet is the new, or what is currently in the UDA for any new lots that are going to be created in the off-road area. But so that if you're going to have a 5,000-square-foot house or greater, you're going to have to find a bigger lot, because you're going to take out your wetlands and your any camera required setbacks from the oceanfront or from the canal.
Approximately what size lot is 120,000 square feet?
Roughly three acres, just around three acres, so.
Curry-tuck three-acre lot.
Where in the past, we haven't excluded the wetlands and excluded the, well, we've never had a proportion.
Proportion, right. And, and this is a way to like basically have a minimum, a bigger minimum lot size for these things in the off-road area without setting it like at five acres. It's still at like three, but we, you take out, you take out the wetlands and the any required camera setbacks, and that's definitely going to reduce a lot of the lots up there. It's going to reduce their buildable area to where they would have to be, you'd have to have just a bigger lot size to be able to, to do a bigger house.
I mean, one way to look at it is essentially, if the state or federal government says you can't put a house on this portion of the lot, you can't count it towards meeting this requirement. Which, I mean, that, that's, so if you create lots, if I go in and create lots, I can't use wetlands in my lot areas. If I do a subdivision, I've got to, I've got to come up with lot area outside of the wetlands. Right now, though, if the lot's a lot of record, so if it's already been created today, if you have a lot of record, it could be 50% wetlands, but it doesn't matter. So what this is doing, this is kind of reaching back and saying, even on these created lots, if you're going to build a big house, we're not going to let you include these wetlands in these, these state and federal setback areas, so.
Which a lot of even like the 10-acre lots up there have quite a lot of wetlands.
Well, I mean, that's, that's, that's true, because there's a lot of 10-acre lots that in fact are probably, there's, there's a handful of 10-acre lots that realistically are only three acres, three to four acres of actual.
Buildable.
Buildable area. I mean, yeah, there's a lot of the backs of these that end up being swamped, and they're 100 feet wide and real narrow, so.
Do we have any idea how many vacant lots meet that, that criteria? It'd probably be impossible to say by plats, because you're not really sure.
Yeah.
On, on some of the setbacks and all.
We don't, we could probably give you, I'm thinking I could use GIS, maybe get to a ballpark figure, but, yeah, I mean, it would still, yeah, I could probably get to a ballpark figure on that.
It's, it's okay, I was just curious.
I have one question, and that is, is that the large house that's up there that's in contention right now, I understand that a lot of that lot is wetland. Would that structure, not counting the side setbacks, because they were different at the time they approved, but would that lot meet the criteria?
It would not.
Okay.
It would not meet this standard on the screen.
But it's grandfathered, correct?
It is now, but yeah, so if we're starting from new, if you, if I applied this lot standard, that lot couldn't have met this.
Okay. Because that had both the camera in the front and the wetlands in the back, so.
Really, the fundamental, would have been a lot of problems, but the fundamental problem was they have a pretty significant amount of wetlands in the back, which is partially why I think you see the house pushed forward so far, to avoid the wetlands. But put it into a camera setback that created the issue in the court case, so.
So just to give you an idea, that the mean lot size, tax for with a residential structure present in the off-road area is .63 acres. And, you know, this is the off-road, and just, you know, the total number of subdivided residential lots up there is like 30, 3,100. And then like it's about 24, 2,400 vacant lots that, you know, and then we would go into, you know, getting, pulling out the camera.
Right. A lot of those are these little postage stamps. What are the size of those, 100 by 150?
Well, like in my subdivision that was subdivided long before we had any zoning up there at all, most of the lots in general are 100 by 150-foot lot, and that includes septic tank area.
Right.
Because you have to have, you have to have a well and you have to have a septic tank, and they're 100 by 150-foot lots. Those lots would not hold a huge house to start, it probably would not even, well, I doubt seriously it would even hold a 5,000-square-foot house.
It'd be tough, I'm sure.
It'd be pretty tough, yeah. So, so that part is okay, you know, in that sense. But, I mean, those are, so a lot of those lots that you're talking about of being vacant lots are those very small lots. I mean, like in my subdivision alone, we have a lot of vacant lots.
I got a question. Using the Latandra House as an example, do we have any idea how it would have been affected? What its maximum size would have been, given these standards?
5,000 square feet, because it couldn't have met this standard here on the screen, so. Now, if Latandra House, had it been able to meet the lot area standard, let's just assume for a second it had a clear three acres, I'm going to guess, but it probably could have got up to like 6,000, if 150% with the proportionality, it probably could have got a little over 6,000 square feet, applying 150% proportionality.
But because of the lot limitations, 5,000?
Yeah, it's not, it was just 5,000, because it wouldn't, it wouldn't have a, if, if this standard were to continue to be in the ordinance, it wouldn't be able to meet that and even qualify, so to speak.
The, the next issue we addressed are the parking standards. And I'm going to have to pull this up on my computer, because I can't read that. Basically, we increased the parking standards, let me get to where the exact language is, but we, for one through four bedrooms, we do a half a parking space. And once you hit that fifth bedroom, we went back to the previous UDO's requirements that you have one parking space per bedroom. So five and greater, we're going back to that requiring one parking space per bedroom. So if you have a five-bedroom house, you would be required to have three parking spaces. Two for the first four bedrooms, and that fifth bedroom, you would have to have three. And there's some more examples in, in the, in the text amendment. But it would change a, let's see, a 15-bedroom house, it would change it from 10 to 13 parking spaces. So, and you can, we can do the math for like a 20-bedroom house and, and on and on. So, but yeah, we increased that number. We also changed some, well, I guess, do we have any discussion on these parking standards right here, with just a straight-up number, the number change, before we go into?
The, the big change is, when the ordinance got adopted in 2013, and probably more of like a water quality, kind of less impervious thought process, the bigger the house got, you actually, your parking kind of diminished as you added bedrooms. So you really got the situation where when you built these much bigger houses, the minimum parking kind of diminished. And that's because I don't know parking kind of diminished, and that's because I don't know that at the time that we really properly anticipated 24 and 25-bedroom houses. What this does, it takes it back to where that parking doesn't diminish as the house gets bigger, it just stays with that one-for-one. So more bedrooms, more parking.
What, can you review real quick, the current standard is, is what? It's two spots?
It's two, two spots for the first four bedrooms. It's one spot per bedroom for bedrooms five through 10.
One spot per bedroom?
For bedrooms five through 10. Then when you get to bedroom 11, it goes back to one spot for every two bedrooms. So the first four kind of has that, basically a half a spot per bedroom, five to 11 is one-for-one, then once you get above 11, or five to 10 is one-for-one, then once you get to 11, you go back to a half a spot per bedroom.
Okay, and what's proposed?
Half a spot for, well, two spots for the first four bedrooms, and then it's just a straight one-to-one.
One per after that, okay. So regardless of house size, it's, it's, it's two spots for the first four bedrooms?
Yes.
I'm with you.
But again, that doesn't really come into play in the off-road area, except for saying the square footage is there.
Yeah, I mean, it could, because if you did a, if you did a 24-bedroom house and you only had to put in whatever the number is, 17 spaces.
Twenty, well, under the new.
But I mean, that, that leaves you, you know, those other, those 22 spaces you didn't have to show is, is room you can otherwise use in your site plan for a bigger house or whatever. I mean, there is a relationship between parking.
Yeah.
And house size, when you, when you get to these big houses.
But I mean, here, again, this would help there, except for the fact that it's, it's not real.
Right.
It's less saying she can use to build on, so.
Yeah.
It's less limiting on the three-acre lots, that's for sure.
So also in this is, in the parking requirement, it's some language that essentially eliminates stacking?
Yeah, in the old ordinance, on the beach, you couldn't stack. So what that means is, every parking, every parked car had to be able to get out of that house without moving another car. The new ordinance went to a bigger space, but had no limitation on stacking, so you could just put parking space, parking space, parking space. So what this does is it, is it says that, and I'm cutting you off for it, I'm sorry, but.
Go ahead.
If you have, if any use, once you get to a requirement for six parking spaces, so that means basically an eight-bedroom house or bigger, which eight bedrooms are typically 5,000-square-foot houses, so we've tied this to that number. So basically, once you get to a house that requires six spaces or more, you can't stack anymore. So once you get over, once you get eight more bedrooms, you're going to fall back into that old, no more stacking. That's an important threshold, because if you're on the mainland building a four- and five-bedroom house, you're going to show your parking stacked in the driveway, and that's, that's okay, because you can just make your, your, whatever, your family remove the car, no big deal. But on the beach, what you're doing is, is you're requiring no stacking for eight, for basically an eight-bedroom house or more, but we're going to go back to the smaller space size.
Right. So, since we're requiring more parking and for residential, in the next section, Table 5.1.5, it, you see how we pulled out residential parking on that, and the size, we've done, instead of a minimum width of 10 feet for commercial, we've now a minimum width of eight feet. And then for parallel parking, it had to be 20 feet in length or depth, and then 15 for angled or perpendicular parking. And then we also are requiring, at least on the site plan, to show a, a drive aisle in the, in the, in the park, in the driveway, so that at least there's an appearance of allowing for emergency access to get in there. Over back to parking, you know, they're going to park however they, the vacationers are going to park however they can get, fit their cars in there.
I'm not going to give up, Fred.
Now, this particular change is not square footage-driven, right? This is parking space-driven.
Parking space-driven.
Which is bedroom-driven.
Bedroom-driven, correct.
Basically, yeah, we've basically correlated to what we know to be, we picked a, yes, that's right, it's an indirect way to be related to bedrooms.
And if you look back on that, all the statistics we gave you about the houses, and we're finding that around 5,000 square feet, or 5,200, it's about an eight-bedroom house most of the time through, you know, the analysis we ran through GIS. So it's, that's where we kind of tied everything together, that, that eight-bedroom, 5,000-square-foot threshold. But since we can't, we now cannot limit the number of bedrooms through, you know, the state law, we'd have to go at it through square footage.
Plenty of devil's advocate on that. How does the county determine what a bedroom is?
We'd use the building code definition.
It's, it's got to have a closet and an egress window and have septic design for that bedroom.
It doesn't have a closet?
Doesn't have a closet, doesn't have septic or whatever, then we're not going to count as a bedroom. Now.
So they can come in and build one of these houses with just a bunch of rooms with windows, with no closets, since it's a?
I mean, they, they could, but I mean, generally, I think we get pretty good bedroom counts. Now, do they go in and, and close bottom floors, or do they take, put bunk beds and playrooms? Yeah, they do. I know they do, but I mean, that's, we try our best to kind of get a good gauge on the bedrooms, but I'm, I'm sure there's some instances where that's not the case. This is a parking area for this, this is that same actual 11-bedroom house. Under the old ordinance, I hope you can see it, they were required to have eight parking spaces, and you can see their bigger spaces are the 10 by 18, but you can see 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. Now, if the car is actually parked like that, you'd have to move a lot of cars to get any cars out. They're, they're kind of just stuck like sardines in there, if they even park like that, I don't even know that they would. Under the new ordinance, rather than having eight spaces, you would have nine spaces required, because again, we've lost that diminishing number, and we've actually done the one-for-one for bedrooms over five. So what you see is, and I didn't draw the lines, but this is a parking pad that will accommodate nine parking spaces at the, at the new dimensions, as well as a 15-foot drive aisle. And it's about 250 square feet larger than the parking pad that was designed for this house under the current ordinance. So even accommodating the drive aisle and the additional spaces, obviously parking areas are going to be bigger, there's no, no doubt, but they may not be, as, they may not be as larger in size as you, as you think they would be. So essentially, you would have a 15-foot drive aisle down the middle, you would have five spaces that come off on this side, and four spaces that would come off on this side perpendicular. So essentially, it's a box that's 45 feet long by eight times the number of spaces you need, so 45, 40 feet here, and then of course, this is 32 feet here.
And the aisle in between is?
An aisle in the middle, yes, 15, yeah, so I mean, it's, it's really not that hard to do. Now practically speaking, when the vacationer approaches this big square rectangular driveway, are they going to leave the aisle? I don't know, probably not.
I have a question for you about the, the large house that's in Currituck Court, I mean, Currituck Club, because one of the things that came up a few months ago was the excess parking and people parking all over the cul-de-sac that it's in and up and down the street and everything else. Do you happen to know the parking allotment for that house?
I don't know what, what they actually put on the ground. I know under this proposed ordinance, they would have been required to do 22 spaces. Obviously, if you have a wedding of 100 or whatever it is, 22 spaces probably isn't enough. But there are other strategies, I mean, you try to park the property, but one thing Currituck Club could do is that they could enforce no on-street parking on their streets. They don't let the county do it. But for example, in Wellhead, our deputies have the ability to go in and enforce no on-street parking. Obviously, you don't want to ticket people on vacation necessarily, but there are some educational efforts we can probably, we've talked about posting better signage, entering neighborhoods, saying no on-street parking. So I think part of solving the on-street parking issue is getting people to understand that you just can't park all over the streets in the county. Because you're, you're just not, you're just not going to be able to park, you know, an event, just like it's hard to park Christmas, and you don't really build parking lots to park like one day of the year or whatever, so.
We did bring up having some type of a permit system, or at least a registration system for weddings, especially events like that, where people could come in and bring a parking plan, and we didn't get any positive feedback to move forward on that. So that, you know, that would be another thing that we could conceivably in the future, you know, maybe have a parking plan for these bigger events, for these houses, and require them, so, you know, to shuttle people in instead of, and parking on the streets.
Yeah, but what is happening now is, is up there again on the off-road, is they're parking on the beach, and then they've got all the weddings set up, you know, all the chairs and everything else, and the arch and all that nice stuff on the beach, which again, takes away from the public access of being able to get up and down the beach. You know, so they're not even necessarily parking on the other side of the dune at the house.
You get the challenge up there, is the county allows, allows parking in the middle of the beach, so. Whereas in the paved road areas, we actually don't allow on-street parking, so yeah, in the off-road area, you particularly have an issue because I don't think you can prohibit parking on the beach, because that's what, that's what you do up there.
Prohibit the vehicles.
Yeah.
That is a long walk.
Well, that's a rule, no more weddings in Currituck County.
You guys tell tourism that. I said, you guys tell tourism that, okay?
Okay.
Okay, that's it.
There is one, one more thing, but it's, it's basically defining living area, because, and it's, it's saying that it's, it's how the tax department assesses the, you know, the, it's basically the heated square footage that people are living in. Since we cite that as a way to gauge compatibility or to calculate compatibility, we needed a definition. We don't have that in our ordinance currently, so this would be new text that goes in Chapter 10, Section 10, and living area. The total square footage of all floor areas, which include finished space that is heated, conditioned, excluding any garages or accessory structures, is calculated by the Currituck County Tax Office.
Question on that is your, let me get it right, ADU accessory dwelling unit?
Mm-hmm.
Which can't be any larger than 1,000 square foot, is that included in that square footage?
No, it would be just that, just, just the main structure and what's on the main structure tax card, because if you have an accessory dwelling, or the Black Stallion that you keep referencing, it does have this whole other living quarters, it has its own tax card, and, and that accessory dwelling could only be a proportion of the main structure.
Well, I thought maybe this is, again, the difference between the paved area and the unpaved off-road, off-road. The accessory dwelling unit, I believe, in the off-road area is 300 to 500, I mean, 300 to 1,000 square feet size limitation for the ADU.
Or 25%, whichever is less.
Or 25% of the other heated area, I mean, other living area.
Accessory dwelling unit can be 1,000 square feet or 25% of the principal structure, whichever is less.
Okay.
And that's for the whole county.
Yeah, oh, that's for the whole county? Okay. But that wouldn't count into this square footage?
It would not.
Okay.
That is a good definition.
It is of heated living area.
I'll tell Tracy Sample you said that. In Lori.
I'll pass that along to the city of Gaveston, Texas. I borrowed some of that from them.
And who do they have to tell? This is getting ridiculous. All right, any questions for staff now that they've done their presentation, and really, really good job on that?
Yeah, I just still have, it's not so much a question as, as much as a, I still have very strong feelings that we should have a difference between, first of all, for the whole county versus the two areas over on the beach, the paved area and the off-road area. And I think we should make a distinction between those three categories.
I, I agree with you 100%. I, I think what we'll do before we start board discussion, we'll, we'll do a public hear, or, yeah, open the public hearing, and we've got 20 minutes that you guys can split. I mean, you don't have to take it, but we want to hear what you got to say.
I have to answer three, because that's what I was used to.
Well, I wish you'd have told me that ahead of time.
That doesn't count in your time.
You get to see my ugly face again, I've been here before, and guess what, I've amended my UDO text message for you all. I'll repeat my name, it's David Nock, live at 573 Hunt Club Drive, Corrala, North Carolina. I've been there, well, I've owned property for 37 years on the Outer Banks, oldest resident of the Currituck Club, been there 18 years. I've worked in real estate, I sold lots there in the Currituck Club, then I moved into and worked for Village Realty and worked on the rental side, so I've got a decent background and experience over there in the neighborhood. I want to try to be positive and not totally negative, so I want to first say that I support what Ben and staff are doing. I read over it, I think you're heading in the right direction. I support weddings in Corrala, okay? Here's another positive note, both my sons were married over on the, one on the beach and one over in, under the trees in the Pile Island area. And I support large residential, I'm using that term residential homes. If Bill Gates or Donald Trump want to come down here and buy 1,000 acres and build a big home, I support that. Now, kind of on the negative side, I think we're falling a little, a little, we're a day late and a dollar short on some of this stuff. Wish we'd have done it five or six years ago before my old friend the Black Stallion got built, or they started building up in the four-wheel-drive area. What I really am concerned with, and I think you all need to look hard at, is safety issues with these facilities. I'm not, I'm trying not to call it an event house anymore, I'm calling it a facility, because if you take your time and look at the drawings on these facilities, they're not like a house. I don't have laminated floors in my garage, I don't have a catering kitchen, I don't have a poolhouse of 5,000 or 2,500 square feet. These are wedding or reunion or facilities, they're not homes. So I think, I don't even think they should be covered under these UDO, I think they are commercial, and that's what I'm trying to get you all to perceive them as. Really want you to focus on during your discussions, and after I leave, you can have that big discussion, safety and utilization, okay? How that facility's being utilized. If Bernie Mancuso who built it and John Summerton from Twitty had been honest with me, they looked me in the eyes and told me it's a single-family residential home, well, you know what my answer to that is? BS. It's never been that. There's been weddings and reunions, and every weekend I'm sending my good friend Ben over here and Dan some pictures of the cul-de-sac with all the cars parked there, or the trolley parked there to take the people down to the beach, or the catering service, or the bride getting, you know, out of the car. It is an event facility. But what really worries me is because you and the Board of Commissioners have not classified them as commercial, then they slid in under the rug, and we're going to have a problem when there's a fire there. when there's a fire there, or they're all up, what I was thinking about is the new one over at Pine Island, all that big deckwork you've seen behind them. And I heard, somebody told me they allow 300 people there. So we're all up there dancing, and that deckwork goes down. What you're seeing in the Coastland Times or anything, all about the steps that are falling in, and the decks that are falling down, and fires, I hear the fire engines every other night. This worries me. The safety of our guests, these people that are coming and staying and visiting with us. You all, the Black Stallion doesn't have a sprinkler system in it, doesn't have exit signs, doesn't have those push bars, okay? And it's going to come back to haunt the county because somebody's going to sue and say, "Why didn't you have it?" This is like a, you know, it's like a hotel. And that's something we really got to look at. One of the reasons I got hot on this issue is, back in 2003, I was going to build a bed and breakfast. My wife and I were going to build a small bed and breakfast at the south end of the Currituck Club. Working with the developer, we went through the rezoning process and have BB-1 down at the south entrance had bought the lot, had the drawings already, was coming over to submit them, and my wife got ill with an infection, brain infection. So that dream went out the window. But it just blows my mind that I was going to have a five-bedroom facility, house, bed and breakfast. Two were going to be for personal use, and then I was going to rent three others. I had to go through all kinds of zoning hearings and stuff, where they had put signs out and people come in and talk about it. But somebody can lie to you and build a 24-bedroom event facility and call it residential, and not have to go through any zoning. What I am asking of you all to do is require those people, if it's strictly residential, that's fine. I have no hang-up with size. What I have a hang-up is these people having events every weekend and focusing on, that is a business. That is a commercial business down there. Weddings are a commercial business. You're in a commercial business? The Whalehead Club. These people are taking business away from the Whalehead Club, and the weddings should be up there. Okay? They can sleep down at the Black Stallion, but they should have a nice tent and the wedding up in front of the Whalehead Club. Not in our community, not parking on our cul-de-sac, not 200 people coming into our community. And that's what I want you all to think about is the difference there. It is not residential. A 24-bedroom facility is not residential, and I ask you to consider what I'm throwing out at you. And I appreciate it. You got any questions to me?
You know, I agree with a lot of what you say, but is the Currituck Club, do you have a homeowners association?
Yes, we do.
Well, a certain amount of this can be solved right there without passing the buck to the county. I live in the Carolina Club.
Yeah.
Okay? And you can't rent for less than a year at a time. It's in the bylaws.
Yeah.
So you guys can, you know, tighten your ownership a little bit without the county helping in every manner.
If, and I talked to Ben about this, if you in some way say that a event facility, or in your writing up of the UDO, say that a facility of over 5,000 square feet and has events in facility is truly not residential, then we have something, we could take them to court. Right now, there's nobody, you know, they can look, go to the court and say, "We're residential. We're just like this house Dave Knoc lives in Porch Town. We just have more bedrooms."
Well, you can deal with the parking issue. I mean, they do it at Sanderling. They got a big family.
Oh, we go over there. But you're dealing with tourons. Do you know what a touron is?
Yes.
A tourist and a moron together. They can't read. We have a big sign right there, "No on-street parking." I've sent Dan and Ben pictures of it. It's right in the middle of the cul-de-sac as you go in. Does that bother them? No.
That's why God invented tow trucks.
Yeah. Well, our board has not decided to start towing them away. But what really concerns me, they park right in front of the fire hydrant. So here again, when that place starts burning down, the fire truck can't get to the fire hydrant because all the cars are parked there. And we're talking 200 people at these weddings. The house sleeps 48, you know, 44 bedrooms. A lot of people come in, a lot of traffic, and it's a mess there. It is not a single-family home. Any other questions to me? I got to head on down the road and take care of my wife. I appreciate your time. And what I tried to write into the text amendment is something to cover you guys, the county. Because what you're seeing is these facilities over there, they're acting like hotels. They're our hotels, these facilities. And since you didn't require them initially, if they so choose to be, quote, "an event facility," they have their choice. But then they got to bring it up to standard, what I'm asking. If they don't want to have them, and they just want to be a house like Dave Knoc, or a rental house like across the street, they got that option too. So my text amendment has options. It doesn't force them to go one way or the other. And I'd like you to reconsider it again, and pass it on to the board or Commissioners, if you don't mind. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. Ms. Marie. Name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Marie Long. Ms. Marie, as Mr. Cooper calls me. I live at 1437 Ocean Pole Road in the off-road. And this whole thing says I have 8 minutes and 40 seconds, which for me normally would not be nearly enough time, because I can really talk. But I don't really have a lot to say. Y'all were gracious enough to let me talk at the last meeting. And also, I really wanted to hear what y'all were going to say, so I could maybe come back at what you're going to say. But I don't know what you're going to say yet, so I'm just going to make a couple comments. I would, I do have a question. When you were talking about the driveway and the easement and all that stuff, am I not correct that in the off-road, you can put a driveway in the easement?
Setback.
I mean, the setback.
There's some flexibility for the driveway access into the lot. And the intent was that is, if the driveway could go in the setback and not disturb an otherwise important dune or topographical feature, you would have some flexibility. But once you get into the lot, the parking still has a 10-foot setback.
The parking has a 10-foot setback?
Yes.
Okay. But the driveway doesn't?
But I was pretty, I'm pretty sure, I don't, do you remember, Donna? I was thinking it was just for the driveway entrance or access to the property.
Okay. And so are you talking about a driveway that goes all the way from the front around to the back, or? I guess it's an entrance driveway. So it can be in the setback, but parking cannot.
I don't believe so.
Approved parking cannot.
What's that?
Approved parking cannot.
Oh, I know that part. I know that part. Okay. Well, I want to tell you, the very most important thing, the very, very most important thing I want you to keep in mind every minute, is this is only for houses over 5,000 square feet. I think sometimes we lose sight of that, and particularly in the case of the compatibility. And again, I don't know what y'all are going to say, but I would just ask that, I know everybody believes in private property rights, including me. I just want you to remember, especially when it comes to that compatibility issue, is the private rights for the existing person that's already there before these other people come in. And along this, I don't even know how to say that. That's really all I'm going to say to you, is I really, really love this proposal. I'm excited about the steps finally, after two years, in 2015, when they brought this up at their retreat. It's really exciting that it has come to actually a text amendment being brought before y'all to vote on. And I like everything in this text amendment. When I came here before, I was going to actually come to you and ask for some more stuff and push in some things, and I could tell that wasn't going to work, so I give up. But this one is really good. So I'd really ask you to support this text amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. I will close the public hearing, and it's board discussion now. I mean, I guess, Ben, please tell me where I'm wrong. But I think the gist of it is 5,000 square, larger than, how is it worded? 5,000 square feet and larger, or larger than 5,000 square feet? I mean, it's a one-square-foot difference.
Larger than 5,000 square feet.
Okay.
But let's pull it up.
So larger than 5,000 square feet. We're increasing side setbacks to 25 feet from 10. The proportionality, once you exceed 5,000 square feet, it's 150% of all properties that touch it. That's how it's worded now. In the off-road, that's really the biggest, well, I don't know if it's the biggest change or not, but it's a big one. It's a three-acre minimum lot size, and all of that three acres is upland, basically. No wetlands. And then the parking standards have changed. Is that it in a nutshell?
Yeah, you said the proportionality. Yeah, so correct. That's it in a nutshell.
It's not just upland, because it could be, if it's on the beach, the, it can't all set back.
It's really buildable area.
That could all be upland.
Right. Buildable area.
Yeah. No, we don't define buildable area, but you guys know what I mean. It's buildable area outside of state or federal setbacks or limitations.
And this does apply to the entire county, mainland.
As written.
Beach, the off-road. That is by far my biggest exception. I don't think this is a mainland issue. And I don't agree with implementing new rules for something that's not been an issue. Now, I'm sure we can all use our imagination and think of times where it might be. But the county's been around for 400 years, and I don't think this has been an issue on the mainland ever, that I know of. I mean, have you guys had issues with this?
Not that I'm aware of.
Proportionality, I mean, I see, I see the goal of that. And I think in Corolla, on the paved road, I see that being a useful tool, probably. But I don't think any of this applies to the mainland.
Right. But if, it doesn't apply because people aren't building those houses. If the opportunity comes around where they want to build a house, they can just come to the board and request a modification. Is that not right?
Well, I think what would happen is we'd prevent something that there's no reason to prevent. As far as, it's not a mainland issue. This has to do with, basically limiting the size of the house. This has nothing to do with the size of the house, by the way. This is the use of the house. And since that's so hard to police, we're looking at it at a house size issue. That's what this is about. So a 6,000-square-foot house Currituck mainland is a lot different than a 6,000, 7,000-square-foot house in Corolla where they're having weddings on weekends. So really, it's a use issue. We're just looking at it as a house size issue.
Well, most of, well, I'm not going to say most of them. Probably all of them that are built on the beach are built for rental, for income for whoever built them. You don't have that in the mainland. Who in the heck wants to come to Currituck County on the mainland and rent a 6,000-square-foot house? To do what?
Annual rentals do good, but they're like 1,300 square feet.
Oh, yeah. You know, I don't see anybody saying, "Oh, I want to go to Moayak and live in that 6,000-square-foot house for a week," because there's a lot to do there.
There are rental houses in Currituck that are rented, just like the beach.
But they're not huge.
Some are not too small.
I mean, like what?
I'm not sure how many bedrooms it is, though.
There's one at the end of Hog Quarter Land.
Yeah, I guess there's one at Spot, yeah, Hog Quarter Land.
Yeah, I know that one.
Isn't it more like outdoor recreation, people that come and hunt and fish and things like that?
I think the intent was that, but it ended up being people staying there and going to the beach.
Hmm.
Because you got boat access and...
Just riding and going across.
Well, all the above, I guess.
Well, even that is rare. I mean, you know, Hog Quarter, I grew up there.
Yeah, I agree. It is rare.
Ain't many of those around.
When they occur, do they also have an increased acreage? I mean, if you're going to put a 20,000-square-foot house on the mainland, you're going to buy 100 acres?
I would assume. I mean, it's hypothetical either way. But, I mean, in my mind, and I'm just one of nine up here, I'd rather not have a rule for a hypothetical that's never been a problem.
Can't we just add that to this?
Well, can't we just say that this applies to these two zones?
Yeah, we could specify these, the two beach zones.
Right.
And just like the three-acre minimums already specified for that rule. Was it the SFR has the three acre?
So the uses of these greater-than-5,000-square-foot homes are basically the problems associated with parking and the events pertaining to noise and such? Is that basic?
That's what started it, I think. And then there's the safety issues with fire of, you know, having weddings and possibly 100 people in the house and things like that.
Now, I think the intent is still, next legislative year, to ask for those fire safety qualifications that we can ask for in larger homes. And I think that's still the intent. But we don't have the authority at this point to ask for those in a single-family residence.
Right. And I think part of what's being addressed is the safety issue with the 25-foot, you know, it's an additional side setback which helps prevent a fire from spreading one building to the next and may give access for a fire truck trying to drive between buildings and things like that. So that's addressed, I think, as usefully as it can be, with really a big side, that's a big side setback. Yeah, that's the biggest in the county, right?
It's big, yeah.
I still really have an issue with permitting these houses to be just from the fire safety health, access, so forth, for the off-road area in comparison to the rest of Corolla. And the fact that the majority of the vacant land, not just lots, but land that's over on the beach that's still vacant is in the off-road area, which is going to encourage people that want to build these big houses to still come up there, which again, brings about all the other issues of the higher density, density in my definition of being number of folks that come to that facility or to that building and stay there, as well as the safety issues of the, you know, the difference between a commercial building and a residential building. And I think that there's a lot of difference, there's just a lot of difference on the number of people that manned the fire stations. What have we got? We've got Pine Island and we've got Corolla Fire Station.
There's one in, yeah, Pine Island, Whalehead.
Pine Island.
Whalehead.
And Whalehead. That's in Corolla.
In Corolla, yep.
Yeah. And then up on the beach, we only have the one at the far end of the beach. And most of the trucks, now Pine Island and Corolla, if it's a big fire, can respond to both. Plus, you've got the trucks that come up from Duck and can get there in relatively moderate time in comparison to getting up on the off-road area. Because in the off-road area, most of their vehicles will not come on the beach. So you've got that much more. And, you know, this past year, we had the commercial fire that hit the Friendly Building and almost took out five adjacent houses, five budding houses. And that was with having the access of all three of the fire stations that are over there, plus being able to get pumper trucks and so forth up there from Duck. So I just have a lot of concern, and I think it's well expressed on the whole beach, for any of these other really large houses. Maybe you can limit it at 10,000 for the off-road area or something like that, you know, without saying how many bedrooms it is, but, you know, between 5,000 and 10,000 square feet, just because of the fire safety, because of the number of septic tanks and the size of the septic system that has to go in, taking care of a 20,000-square-foot property. The water, we only have well water. So the more you're drawing off for the use of a huge house, the more you're drawing off of everybody else's water. If this 24-bedroom house that's right beside Marie's 6,000-square-foot house really pumps three wells in there to have enough sufficient water... three wells in there to have enough sufficient water to provide water for their mini bathrooms that they have and so forth like that, sanitary facilities, their cooking and so forth like that, it's bound to impact her well, because again, we only have a certain amount of fresh water. So, I see just a really big difference between Corolla with having the public facilities available versus the remote area.
I agree with everything that she says, but I think you're overlooking my obvious is that once they get to a point, there's a trigger, and they're commercial. That's just flat out. And if commercial's not allowed there, then that's the end of the story. You don't have to go any farther than that.
And that's another thing is to designate anything that's over X number of square feet as commercial.
Whatever the trigger and whatever the commissioners will go along with is the question, but I could easily be in favor of that. And I agree, there should be two separate areas, maybe, well, three separate areas. You're talking about the mainland, you're talking about Corolla, and you're talking about four-wheel drive, because there are three separate entities.
And I mean, and that's part of the reason, I believe, all along that they, once they put zoning over there, they said no commercial zoning. And, you know, we had a man that had lived there most of his life or whatever like that that was prohibited from running the ice cream truck up and down the beach. And yet now you've got all these caterers and you've got these wedding event planners and you've got the shuttle buses that are bringing people to these events.
Pony tours.
But you can't buy an ice cream sitting on the beach.
Well, staff, I guess, they looked at the 25-foot side setback, part of the fire issue, and then the three acre, the house beside Ms. Marie wouldn't be there with this three acre rule.
Well, that's true.
And saying it's commercial, that gets into policing use, so you'd almost have to do a square footage limit in the off-road. Commissioners have said they may not go along with that, but that doesn't mean you guys could put it in there and pass it on anyway.
Well, we're not, yeah, I guess we are putting the limit in the off-road, you know, but if they're serious about non-commercial, then they have to look at both sides of it because they're overlooking one.
At some point, it's a code enforcement issue. If they're not allowed to have commercial, go enforce the code.
Question, what?
But they're not classified as commercial, that's the whole
But if they're conducting commercial business, just like the ice cream guy, shut them down?
How's it defined as commercial through the state laws?
Exactly.
As far as housing, because that's been in the course, has it not? In the single family and all, that's been ruled.
Yeah, I mean, just to boil it down kind of simply, from a building code perspective, if the architect seals it as a residential building, the county's very limited in our ability to enforce building code commercial standards. Matter of fact, I went to the Building Code Council and was, the fact proved to be the case. The commissioners through zoning could perhaps try to establish some type of vacation rental as a commercial use, but that's just really difficult to unpack.
Right, because if you didn't
Because there's 4,000, there's 4,000 housing, there's 4,000 seasonal housing units in Currituck County. So, if there's 4,000 seasonal housing units, I don't know how to create a threshold for where they become commercial versus not, because it's a difficult, if you really start thinking about it, it's difficult to do that.
Say they did create a threshold where they deem a commercial, so then the places at the beach, say four-wheel drive area, there's the commercial, so then nobody can rent cottages past that threshold, correct?
Be correct.
Not to mention the fact that those properties' uses are somewhat protected by the vacation rental laws.
The only thing I could think to do is maybe, and I'm not saying this is, you've got to think about how you would enforce this, but, you know, kind of what Dave Knox tried to say is you basically limit the number of events at a house. So, you would define special events, whatever they are, and then you would try to say, all right, at this house, you can only have six special events or whatever the number is, but, you know, then you have to think through, well,
Well, I was.
How do you work through that, so?
I did that and actually wrote down some things when he was limited that, because the thing that sparked my interest was that acceptable forms of that documentation, pictures of events by neighbors, blah, 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 blah. So, I started thinking, huh, what would be event? So, in your normal thought process, and I'm asking anybody to speak up, what would you say would qualify an event? Would that be any function that was over, say, 20, 30 people? I mean, just, I'm not pinning anybody down, I'm just asking, would you say that would be an event?
No. Kid's birthday, that could easily have 50.
See, I can get my family in there, it'd be more than that.
Your Sunday dinner, that's
So, here's my point. So, we just said that the number of people may not create it, all right? So, you look at events, and I was just looking at what we do at my house on any given function minimum, I mean, we'll bear a minimal family, not even all there, we're looking at 30 people.
Yeah.
And so, you take, I took into account birthdays and minimum holidays, and I was looking at nine events right there, just off the top, and that ain't counting nothing in between.
You're not even making any money.
I don't, yeah.
You're not getting $20,000, you know, a week for it, you know?
But I'm saying, you're getting into a hard category when you're going to start defining events.
Exactly.
I don't care what it is, that's a tough road. And then as far as you look at the beach and what it is, I think you're going to have a lot of people that are going to argue that in big ways, because that's mostly what the beach does. I mean, rentals versus residential is a pretty big gap, is it not?
Like I say, there's probably, I don't know, 30, 4,000 seasonal housing units, probably 30, 100 of those on the beach. And that means they're not all, but the majority are probably in a weekly rental program.
The rental program holds a little weight, is what I'm getting at. That's an uphill battle.
Well, and I think this has been looked at at the county level, at the state level, and it all comes down to it's difficult, if possible, to police use on a house, whether it's rental or not. I mean, the amount of money that they bring in is really irrelevant. Either way, it's a rental house.
Right. The issues that I've heard at hand today mainly is parking and the hazards that, or the complaints that's generated from everybody parking everywhere. And to me, that seems to be more of an enforcement through local laws on public streets and not necessarily the point that a text amendment, because what's a text amendment going to do? Them same people are not going to notice text amendment and it's still going to be that way, even though, you know, we don't want to write tickets to vacationers, however, if they started getting tickets and complaining they're not renting these houses, then at the same token, it'll be a lot less. With the social media today, people are not going to go there and like, wow, everybody's getting tickets because there's nowhere to park. I mean, there's different ways, we can make rules all day long, does that mean people are going to follow them?
Not necessarily.
I think, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to ask you, would you please tell New Orleans I was on vacation and we got a parking ticket?
Yeah.
And we shouldn't have, let them know, would you?
Were you at a wedding?
No, man, I was trying to get breakfast. I've got one other thing to say, you know, in distinguishing the off-road area, and I'm by no means, you know, in favor of trying to say every rental house over there is commercial property, because that is the whole force of the whole outer banks, economy and everything else. But I'm looking here and we only have, in the remote area, we only have two houses that are now either under construction or constructed that are in excess of 10,000 square feet. I think that, you know, we've got 27 houses that are greater than 5,000 square feet. So, they're fitting between that 5,000 and 10,000 square feet. I think as far as fire safety, water concerns, all of those other functions that happen up there, the number of people that are in a property, therefore that many more on the beach or whatever, you know, using it, I think the remote area could easily handle houses that are under 10,000 square feet with the same regulations that you're putting on, as far as if it's between 5,000 and 10,000 square feet, then you've got to do that. But to cap off, because of fire safety, because of health reasons, because of the fragile nature of the land, of the number of people going across the dunes in any given neighborhood and so forth like that, access up and down the beach, I think we can handle houses that are under 10,000 square feet. But when they get up above the 10,000 square feet mark, then you're talking about that many more people whose life is dependent on lightning not striking that house, another dwelling setting your house on fire and having 100 people in the house.
So, you propose between 5,000 and 10,000 meet the rules we're talking about, but a cap of 10,000?
A cap of 10,000 on the remote area. Again, I think it can be justified by what is already set in the UDO as far as the low density and no commercial. And then we don't have to redefine the commercial.
Didn't you say the commissioners weren't real keen on the cap?
Well, the commissioners have to be convinced, you know, and I think that, you know, part of our, the way I see it, for the planning board to come forth and make that thing, and then when it goes before the commissioners, let the public come and speak.
Make them speak.
You know, let the people who want the 15,000 square foot house, the 20,000 square foot house, let them come and make their point to the county that they should be allowed to have 25,000 square foot house.
The commissioners directed the staff not to create an overall cap, but I don't think that would prohibit this board from having that conversation. I think, like Jane said, that the important thing is if you're going to move in a different direction to give some, what you did, and it'll be in the minutes, to give some context for why you feel like it's important.
And it's reasonable. It's all about safety, public safety, fire issues.
And just density of the off-road area.
And there's only two there now, right? Is that still accurate?
That was August 2015 data. I don't know if that includes the Latandra House or not.
As far as I know, the only one that's there is the Wild Horse House.
This was updated with data in January.
Okay, so it probably does, then.
I don't know if that was just the building permits issued or they, have the COs been issued.
Probably CO.
It's probably CO, so no, I would say there's, then there's three now.
Marie, do you know of another one up there besides the Wild Horse that exceeds 10,000 square feet?
I don't, but I can't say that I would miss this. I mean, I just know that two things. I don't know if it's like 11,000 or 12,000 square feet.
It's certainly not more than three, so.
Three count and the new one.
Three count and the new one, at the most.
Yeah.
That would eliminate that.
I mean, there may well be one that's 10,500 square foot or something like that, because, I mean, we have a lot of, we have several 12-bedroom, I don't know if several is the answer, but I mean, we have some that are 12-bedroom. We had the two in Swan Beach that are 12-bedrooms and 14-bathrooms. As it stands right now with this proposal, if someone goes up there and buys a big pile of land, there's nothing abutting on the property on any side, they can build what they want.
Yes, that was the example I was using earlier.
Yeah, so if there's nothing else there.
Unless they have a lot, the buildable area and the setbacks, if they can meet those dimensional requirements, there's no abutters, there's no size restriction.
Right, but I mean, if we didn't, then they could build whatever they want. And then the issue of whatever somebody else could build would come into effect if they wanted to build something on property adjoining that particular piece.
And I think this amendment essentially has the effect of taking these big houses and push, they're going to look for areas that basically aren't around other houses that they're going to locate away from places on bigger lots. And that's what this amendment's going to do essentially. And then, like John made, or the chairman made a really good point earlier, what you're doing is you're kind of chasing use through square footage. You're making the assumption that the bigger houses probably have more intensive events, so you're kind of coming at it from that angle.
Ms. Jane, would you be opposed if instead of a cap, it was a special use permit possibly at 10,000 square feet, so it's not completely eliminated? I mean, Bobby brought up a good point. Say Trump or whoever went out there and bought 200 acres and said, I want an 11,000 square foot house, they'd have the option to present that case to the board and safety concerns would be looked at and the adjoining property owners would have a chance to, that way it's not ruled out for anybody.
I wouldn't be opposed to that because a special use permit, then you can put the conditions on the special use permit such as you must have
You can put event conditions, yeah.
You must have exit signs, you must have wells on your property that are designated for fire.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
You know, but then it still allows that between 5,000 and 10,000 square foot.
Five and 10 without the
Well, because I think that's one of the main points that people, and in Corolla, I mean, it's the same thing. People felt, feel very much that there was absolutely no public discussion about the Wild Horse House. It just suddenly appeared, you know? Ben had a very difficult job as far as being planning board, the head of the planning department, he did a very good job or whatever like that, following the UDO that was written. But if after a certain square footage, there was at least a special use permit, then it would go through the public hearing process. The same way with the property beside Ms. Long is it never had any public discussion whatsoever.
But if they met the rules, why should it?
Well, that was the whole thing, is that it was so large, but, you know, nobody certainly saw the description of the property as far as the three big buildings, which make it more ostentatious, I should say, than the Wild Horse House. The Wild Horse House is on, what, 12 acres or something like that?
It's potential, it's
Yes.
It's loaded by itself.
Yeah, I mean, and it's just a huge building sitting up on the hill by itself on this 10 acres, so it's not, you know, it's not objectionable environmentally from sight. I mean, I know when I used to work with the Corps of Engineers and we went to put up towers, we had to take in the environmental concerns of your existing views, you know, down in Kennedy, down in Texas, which is a public, some type of public property or something like that. We couldn't get a tower built that we needed for protection, you know, for our safety programs because there was objections that it would interfere with the line of sight view from an environmental point of view. And I think here, you know, when the board, the planning board here saw the actual description of the building and saw how imposing it is, the general impression is it's a motel six, you know?
Well, yeah, even if a special use permit were required, I guess the biggest thing there would be, like any special use permit, you could put some criteria and limitations on special events and require some safety stuff possibly.
And like I said, you could put conditions on that special use permit rather than just, oh, sure, anything goes, you know?
Any other discussion?
Curiously, what you think?
My personal opinion about the special use permit is that it would be logical to have that.
For the over 10,000, but just in the off-road.
I think the
Perhaps all of the Corolla area, including the off-road area. You still end up with the dilemma of use, which is going to be the manufacturer everybody's raising cane about. Not necessarily the size per se, but obstruction of use, fire safety.
I think we saw an example to where with this rule, about 9,000 is probably going to be a realistic limit in the paved road area.
For an average lot.
Right, for a 20,000 square foot lot.
Realistically, that's probably only going to be about a 6,500 max. You're talking about a square block?
Yeah, because they're not going to be square. I mean, you make it an L a little bit. I mean, the main thing with the off-road, and I think what Jane's talking about is safety issues and things like that, and, you know, it makes sense.
Are we talking about this plus the 10,000? Are we talking about scrapping this and going with a max of 10,000?
Well, what we're looking at now, we've complicated it a little bit, but what, the basics of the rule was 25-foot side setbacks, proportionality of the 150% of abutting, three acre minimum in the off-road, and then the increased parking requirements.
Right.
But now we're looking at it in three different places. Scrap it all on the mainland, do as staff has presented in the paved road area, and Scrap it all on the mainland, do as staff has presented in the paved road area, and 10,000 square, over 10,000 square feet, talking about a special use permit in the off-road.
But are we talking about, I'm just talking about the off-road area. Are we talking about this?
Yes.
And the limit?
Yeah, that would apply between 5 and 10,000 square feet. I think is what we're talking about. I think it was well surmised.
Well, one of the things in the paved area of the beach area is you're going to have abutting properties. And, you know, again, the numbers are there that most of those, I mean, there's very few sections or lots where you're going to have something that's not abutting with a house or a building or a commercial site or something beside it. And then if later, the Board of Commissioners or the county decides to go with defining these big houses, these event houses as commercial, you're still okay, because you're in the, you know, you're in the, the commercial areas down there.
I'm staying. I just wanted to figure out how we're going to between the three areas.
Yeah.
Clay, what's your thoughts?
I'm still trying to formulate them.
I don't know anywhere in Corolla that you can buy 10 acres of land right now, in the paved area.
Not that I know of either. And if you did, you'd probably develop it, you know, smaller lots.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I remember it was, I guess about the time I came on the board, and that strip where they now have the big 12-bedroom houses right there beside the Hampton Inn, they tried to zone that commercial, and the county, for whatever reason happened, that that didn't go through. So then they divided them up into lots and put these huge houses on there, you know? But they again bud up to other houses that are 6,000, 7,000, and 8,000 square feet to start with, so then you go to 15,000 square feet, you know, or 12 or 13, you know, they blend in there.
I guess, I guess my concern is that we're debating such a few that are actually probably going to ever occur due to the extreme costs associated with. There's a lot of extremities, and it's a very minute portion. My overall feeling about it is I would rather see something of this nature versus a commercial building. I mean, they do resemble the beachiness look and everything of it, and I think they, I think they are needed. I don't know, as far as...
Well, the bigger houses are needed, or hotels are needed, so.
Really, the bigger houses and hotels, my personal feelings on that, but that's just personal feelings. It keeps, it keeps the sense of the beach together, my thoughts.
I think the Commissioners, I'm assuming Commissioners gave staff direction to come up with something to limit house size, basically. So they're going to do something to limit house size, so our job is to give them our input as best we can, and they're going to agree with us or not, but we're going to do our level best to give them good advice, is what our job is tonight. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
We've beat this dead horse for two months now. Let's move on with it.
Yes, ma'am. Make a motion.
Make a motion.
Come on, go for it.
I don't even know where to start. Whatever they said, plus.
All right, I'll make a motion. As staff present it, make a motion to approve as staff present it with the 25-foot side setbacks, the proportionality of 150% of abutting properties, with the three-acre minimum in the off-road area, and with the increased parking standards. And this is all due to public health, safety, and conformity issues on the outer banks. However, my motion would include that this does not apply at all to the mainland, and that be SFM, is that correct, single-family mainland?
You can just say, you can just say mainland.
Okay. Does not apply on mainland at all, and in Corolla, it does apply as presented by staff, and it does also apply in the off-road section, but with the increased requirement of a special use permit on houses greater than 10,000 square feet.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Praise the Lord. We're not going to take a break.
Yes. All right, recess. Playtime. You know what recess is?
Yes. Good job with the motion, John. Good job.
That's what everybody was kicking around.
I don't think that was ever going to end.
It's been months.
Yes, it has.
Well, it's, I don't like how it... It's a place to start. It's limiting for that guy that buys between two little houses, and then he builds a bigger one, and then them two houses get torn down, and then he's between two bigger houses. You know what I mean?
Yeah, but you know, the thing of it is, is no matter what you do...
There's a downside.
Is that right? You know, somewhere along the line, you have got to do something, and then work through things that aren't good, or things that are weird, or things that just make no sense.
All we're rid of a confluence is bigger size.
And parking spaces. Well, that's true anywhere. I mean, that could happen up there in the...
They can jump.
That could happen right over the road from me, in that development. They're close as they are together. I believe the start, it's something.
No, I'm just going to stretch my legs a little bit.
Stand up.
I got a 45-minute drive back.
Bless your heart.
All right, sit there again. Just stretch a little bit.
Susan, you should have an email about this committee meeting next week, I think it is.
Oh, yes.
Where is it?
The law firm.
No, I'm not meeting the law, but where is it?
Where are all the lawyers?
North of Ranchland.
They just need to...
2046.
Old houses up there. Is it on the same side of Rose? Because it said it was a map or whatever, but I didn't have that, I didn't see that. It said, I saw the attachment was a letter.
Yeah, but the attachment, if you scroll down for a letter, it said...
I want to tell you all something about... I swear to God, she said, and she said, she knows we live in Mayock. She's not going to ask you to come. She said, "Where is the sentiment campaign?" I got broke up.
You know that sign?
And then she said, she said, "The sign says..." Something like, "Know y'all from the campaign," and she said, "You know what the sentiment campaign is?" Well, yeah, she said, "Dyke." She said, "You know y'all from..." Yeah. But I thought that was hilarious, because we didn't talk about that last time. She said, "Where is Mayock?" And I'm like... It's supposed to be Mayock.
It should be.
So who's C.A. Howard who's involved in that?
No, he's just has, he's just offering it for sale. He's the real estate agent.
Oh, okay.
Whoever Tybord Auto Auction guy was, I cannot think of his name, but he has it for sale. But, you know, they're proposing access to be through Ranchland. They're proposing the access to be through Ranchland. I don't know if they're aware of that yet.
Holy cow.
Yeah. Well, this would be the other side down.
All night, all 24. It's way too loud. You what? The planning board.
My argument is so much of this should have been handled by the homeowners association.
Okay.
I've got it, I've got it.
Did y'all go out for Michael's birthday?
This huge family comes in every year, and they pass new regulations every time.
Go call the meeting back in order. Bye.
They can have the buses come up. They can do that. And so, you're probably going to...
To you, Ms. Morek. All right, next item. PV 1610, Currituck County UDO Housekeeping 2016, request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 2, Administration, Chapter 4, Use Standards, Chapter 5, Development Standards, Chapter 6, Subdivision and Infrastructure Standards, Chapter 7, Environmental Protection, and Chapter 10, Definitions and Measurement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can promise you, this won't take two hours.
It might with us.
I don't think so. This one's, this one's pretty straightforward. As you mentioned, it's the 2016 Housekeeping Amendment, and Housekeeping Amendments generally don't change substance of the ordinance, they just correct, primarily correct inconsistencies and issues related to the text itself. So I've broken this up into 10 items. You can either review them and act on them independently or together, that's entirely up to you. They each stand alone. What I'll do is I'll go through each one of them, I'll pause, and if you have any questions, go ahead and, and jump right in with those questions you may have, otherwise I'll just go on to the next one.
I just have one typo before you start, in case you quote this over on something else. Chapter 4 needs a space. I will fix that.
Thank you very much.
Picky, picky, Jane.
Okay, item one. During the 2015, the 2015 Housekeeping Amendment, the Planning Board actually brought up an issue with the term limitations that's in the ordinance. They were inconsistent with the, your rules of procedure. For some reason, the Board of Commissioners did not adopt that in their motion, so we were actually putting that in text this time, so that it should be picked up. So what that does is it changes your appointment period from three to two years, which is consistent with your rules of procedure.
And that's still two terms as there, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Unless you fill an unexpired term first.
Correct. Item two, this is just a correction on a misquoted zoning district. No real substance change there, it's correcting the MXR district. Item three, this is a change being proposed on behalf of, at a request of the state of North Carolina. Our ordinance actually states that if you are mining one acre or less, not including the haul road, you are not considered an extractive industry, and you are not subject to the use permit standards. It was basically a zoning permit. That is inconsistent with the state requirements. Their state, the state requirements actually include the haul road. So what has been happening to some operators is they, they have been proposing mining operations, small mining operations of less than an acre, not including the haul road. State comes down, does a calculation on their disturbed area or affected area, and finds that they've disturbed over an acre, they're then subject to either reclamation and fixing that to make it less than an acre, or obtaining a mining permit. So to avoid any confusion between the two permits, our language will be consistent with the states at their request. Item four, this is a correction of a percentage that is quoted, that is incorrect, basically Property Owners or Homeowners Association requirements. Anytime you have common area in your subdivision, you are required at 75% of lot sales to turn everything over to the association, and there's an incorrect reference of 51%, so it's correcting that to 75. Item five is at the request of our Public Works Department. Current language actually suggests that, or requires, utility providers to co-locate their utilities in the same trench, and apparently that's been an issue with our Public Works Department, and they are asking for separate utility lines, and the utility lines specific to that utility should be in the trench, and not co-mingling those between them. Item six, this is a correction for the community form standards for the conservation subdivisions. As you know, all subdivisions, we encourage interconnectivity. The language that's specified in the ordinance today actually excludes interconnectivity for conservation subdivisions. And although conservation subdivisions, you do have a lot of innovative design, interconnectivity is still, should be intended and provided inside of those types of subdivisions, so it corrects that reference. Makes no change to the minor subdivisions. Item seven, this actually clarifies and corrects parking standards for flea markets. Right now, the way it's written in the ordinance, under our building features for flea markets, we actually specify a parking standard for, based on the number of spaces or tables that you rent, and in the parking table, we base that on a building square footage. So what we've done is just removed the parking standard from the use-specific standards under building features, which is truly not, and put it in the parking standard, and we now have a standard for an outdoor flea market or an indoor flea market, and that clarifies Item eight, this is a correction to the heavy manufacturing zone, heavy manufacturing definition. We have two references in the ordinance. You have a definitions section, and you also have a use classification category and type. And in the definitions, we actually prohibit asphalt and concrete plants under heavy manufacturing. And in the use-specific standards, in the same chapter, it includes them. So this actually corrects that inconsistency, and now asphalt and concrete plants are an allowable use in the heavy manufacturing definition. Nine actually deals with exterior lighting, and this is an antiquated form of reference that we've been using back when all we had were incandescent lights. Wattage is probably okay, but now that we have other forms of lights that use the same amount of power but produce a brighter light, as you know, wattage is basically a measure of the power source, not necessarily the light output. So what we're proposing is to go with a consistent lumens reference, which will, across the board, make... which will across the board make any type of, um, light that you use, uh, would, would, it's referenced by the amount of light it actually outputs. Item 10, this is the stormwater section, and this is actually being proposed by, um, engineering. And it is to correct several, um, issues that they have had since the adoption of the ordinance and clarify some, uh, some procedures that they have been using. And it actually puts them in ordinance form. Uh, the first one deals with the exemptions. Currently, if you, if you have a major site plan, which are typically non-residential in nature, and you're locating that in an existing subdivision that has a state permitted stormwater, and functional stormwater management system and specifies a lot coverage, this, this exemption would allow you to file your plan based on that state permit and not be subject to these stormwater regulations. Uh, that's been policy that they, they have been using, but it's not been spelled out in the ordinance. But this will allow, it will clarify it for anyone who may have a question. And you have an existing subdivision that was recorded five years ago, and it has a functional stormwater system in place, and you have a specified lot size. That's the requirement you meet, and you don't have to go, um, through, uh, the standards of this particular section related to detention. So you, you're only meeting the requirement based on the state permit, not the detention standards by this ordinance. Also in this section is a clarification on the finished floor and building pad elevations. You know, we've had a lot of discussion about finished floor and building pads. But what we, what they've done in here is, when this, when this was first written, uh, we were primarily seeing, um, pier foundations and not a lot of slab-on-grade foundations. So the building pad was, was at a particular level. And then your finished floor elevation had to be 18 inches above that. So if you were doing a slab-on-grade, it, it presented a problem because you didn't have that separation. So this reference now is not, that additional 18 inches is not above the building pad. It will be above the storm event. So you can design your building pad to be already above that storm event. And you'd be okay either with a slab-on-grade or, um, a pier foundation.
And that, that's spelled out in the drainage plan? That, that 24-hour storm event?
It is. It's spelled out in the, in the stormwater manual.
Okay.
So before, you couldn't do a slab house because you couldn't have?
You could. It just, the references in the ordinance, what we were having to do, if you were coming in with a new subdivision, and I'll use Laurel Woods as an example because that was, that was one that, that, um, this actually applied to. They designed all of their building pads to be 18 inches above the 10-year storm. And not 18 inches above the building pad. So you had your building pad here, which all was already designed 18 inches above the 10-year storm. So you've already factored in that 18 inches. So you could build a slab-on-grade, but that's.
But the way the rule is written before.
You had a building pad here and then 18 inches. Yeah. So it just clarifies that and makes it very clear. I mean, we were, we were doing that, but we were having to put it on, on, um, on the plats and make sure that everybody understood that it wasn't an additional 18 inches above what was, what was shown on the, on the final plat for the finished floor elevation.
And that, that's going to be for new subdivisions, right?
Yes.
Okay. So if there's already a, a determined building pad required height, then it is still what was required at that time?
Correct. Correct. This section also removes the requirement that if you have a 100-year regulatory flood protection elevation, um, that, that your finished floor elevation has to be 18 inches above that. And what that does is a regulatory flood plain elevation is already a foot above. So there's a foot freeboard above the, the flood elevation. So that's like two and a half feet. So that's, that's a incorrect reference as well. So that's being taken out. So it was basically saying you had to be two and a half feet above your building pad. This section also deals with easements. Uh, what we've been seeing with a lot of these larger, uh, drainage ditches, that if it, if it required a 25-foot or 50-foot drainage easement, that the easement didn't necessarily specify that it had to include the, the drainage conveyance. And this, this will do that. So you have your, your 25 feet or your 50 feet from the top of the embankment, but it will also include the, the conveyance system that's located on your property as well. And that is it. That was pretty quick. Probably too quick.
Pertain to easements?
Yes.
In, in the easement, are people allowed to put buildings and fences and stuff of the sort?
You're not allowed to put, anytime you have an easement, a utility easement or drainage easement, what the ordinance says is you're supposed to obtain the written permission of the easement holder. So you might be the power company, and if you have a power easement there, then you'd have to obtain the written permission to put any type of structure in there. If it's a drainage easement, then you don't want to put anything in there that's going to prohibit or restrict the flow of water or the maintenance of that.
I guess that, that's what I run into all the time is, uh, in drainage easements, the fences go well past it. Trees are planted there, sheds are put there. And then when you do have to clean your ditch out, of course, you know, you're not touching my fence.
Exactly.
I didn't know, I didn't know actually how that worked and.
Yeah. There, you're not supposed to impede either the flow of stormwater or the maintenance of that, of that drainage system. That doesn't mean that people don't do that.
Questions for staff?
One thing I do not see in this section about the planning board terms of office, unless I missed it, I don't see what it said what the actual limit of terms was. It says how long the term is, but not that there's a two-term limit consecutive.
I think that's in your rules of procedure, but let me double check that. Yeah, it's in your rules of procedure. And it is a maximum of two successive terms.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff? You play a lot of subdivision work with separate utility lines and trenches. That's normal, isn't it?
Well, no, not really. I'll speak to that.
Please do.
The, the trench thing, I think is actually a good thing because what you have happening is, uh, and I've done some that require, you do a single trench, and say you have, uh, your power company, which here is Dominion. You have your phone company, which is CenturyLink right now, and then you have, say, MediaCom. And now you're seeing, uh, natural gas also in the mix. Well, first of all, gas, you don't want that near anybody else's utilities for obvious reasons. But you have a trench, say, those trenches are going to be this wide. Most conduits are going to be either typical for, for Dominion, six inch for three phase, which you don't see that much. And then four inch, possibly two inch for the remainder. So you have pipe like that, then you have CenturyLink, a pipe like that, and then another one possibly all on that. So one goes in there, they run their line through the conduit, and the trench is usually that's going under the roads and the pipes and stuff of the sorts. So then the next guy gets there and they have a problem. You have a guy digging over top of all three lines. And typically, if you hit one, you hit all of them, and you're knocking out phone, power, everything all in a single wax. And if you had them in separated, at least if somebody could, it happens, uh, a lot.
Is that what's been happening? Multiple utilities?
I'm assuming so.
They're having problems with that, you know?
Yeah.
And you just don't, you don't want to be digging beside somebody else's stuff. You need to take phone like fiber optic, and you hit that, that's a $10,000 fine.
Wow.
And even with a shovel, you can damage it, so.
Okay. I was just curious. Because I've usually seen them when they are spread out.
Yeah. With Dominion, Dominion frowns upon it to begin with. They don't want to, all of them do. They don't want them around. Everybody's like, stay away.
Okay.
It's a good thing. It is.
Any other questions or discussion? All right. Then we'll ask for a motion.
I make the motion that we approve the, uh, housekeeping, uh, UDO corrections as proposed by staff.
Second. We have a motion of second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. Who's next, Carol? I lost mine.
Uh, Jeremy.
I'd like to make one comment first.
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's announcement time.
All of the members of the planning board, all the commissioners, and Currituck County government do not condone the use of the word turon. We do appreciate our visitors and our guests that come here because that is a major source of income and tax revenue for our county, and we do appreciate those people that do come here.
Agreed. And in the record. Other announcements?
I have two things. Number one is, there's a community meeting on Tuesday next week for the Mayock Park property. It's 25 acres that the county owns in the Shingalane subdivision, so just down the street from the, uh, assisted living facility. It'll probably be more of a passive park in nature, so not ball fields and big tractor tractors. But with the connectivity that this board has supported and the sidewalks and that part of Mayock, we're going to add probably about 500 lots that will be able to walk to that park on the sidewalk. So that's kind of neat in terms of creating that core of Mayock and having a walkability. But you also have a community meeting next Tuesday at 6:30 as well, so you'll have to choose if you decide to go. Other thing is, land plan survey is still out there. If you haven't paid the survey, pay. If you haven't shared with your, uh, social network, share. We actually already have a thousand responses to the survey. Which is why my original goal was to get a thousand responses to reach, we ran it up to 1,500. But it's amazing how many, how many responses we've gotten with the survey.
And where did you take the survey?
Imagine Currytuck, not Collins.
We can resend that link.
Mm-hmm.
That's the planning board.
I have seen it all over Facebook, so it's, it's out there.
Good. Because we know that it's easy to do. We're actually paying money to boost posts on Facebook. We're actually, for the first time, advertising business on social media.
Yeah. Must be effective. It's on there.
Which was the idea that's here, so I'll take credit for that.
And thank you guys for those of you that have shared it and have taken the survey. I appreciate that.
Uh, what do you think on the land use committee?
Um, we have taken the summer off as far as committee. The steering committee itself. We're focusing on getting the survey out and doing, um, focus group meetings, like, uh, the exercise we put you all through at the last meeting with the assets and challenges. We have, uh, we're going to be getting with the Chamber of Commerce, uh, the last week in July, uh, the Extension Board. Trying to, uh, catch up with the Ladies' Auxiliary on Lots Island. And trying to, uh, catch up with Lower Currituck, uh, Landowners Group, probably for the first, uh, weekend in August.
It's all Water Advisor Board.
It's all Water Advisor Board. We, uh, got an email out to their, uh, staff person. So instead of having steering group, steering committee meetings, we're doing more of the focus group, uh, meetings over the summer. Uh, we're going to be going up to the off-road area on Friday to catch, to visit or stay there. We're trying to get with the focus group in the off-road area for first couple of weeks in August. But we could just say that exercise. When I'm saying focus group, um, we're basically a group of stakeholders, interested parties. Uh, and we're going to do assets and challenges, just like we did with you guys at the last meeting. So if you all know of any groups that we really need to, uh, contact and, and put them through their paces like we did you guys, uh, please let me know. And give me a contact, uh, name. A meeting with them, the Chamber, on the tw- the last weekend in July. The Chamber and the Extension Board in the last week of July.
The committee will probably start meeting in either August or September. At that point, we should have a pretty significant amount of input from stakeholders and surveys. Then we're going to go do this open public meeting. So we're going to go set up, you know, the libraries and cafeterias, invite people. And once we get through that in the fall, we'll start actually writing the plan. Partially, hopefully, based on input we've gotten, and you want to have a plan that reflects what the community really wants to see. So, let's move along. If you got a group that we need to be in front of, just like Laura and I or myself, and we'll get in front of it. Grocery groups, church groups, whatever it is. Grouping groups.
We give, please give us a contact so I'm not just coloring and calling people.
Right. Okay. Other announcements? You sure?
Yeah, I want to make one announcement. Up in the beach area, um, we have the one church there, which is the Corolla Chapel. Uh, in the last year and a half, we've had a new pastor and his wife that came in and took over. And they are doing a really wonderful job of involving the international students that are here working by having a, um, just a free fellowship dinner. It's not a church service as such on Wednesday nights. Uh, we go and pick up, um, the international students at Food Lion and at the Harris Teeter. And the meal is catered by generosity of, of the people that are up there, including some of the tourists. Are providing, you know, some of the food and, and the different things. So it's a real nice outreach to the, to the foreign students, to get them to know each other as well as to feel part of the community up there.
That's awesome. Yeah, speaking of that, last time I saw, Ms. Jane was rocking out at a concert. For real.
Not rocking too hard.
Oh, you were.
You got video?
That's my announcement. Video next meeting. All right. Well, motion for Jeremy.
I see you at the VHR.
Second.
Second to motion.
In favor. Aye. See y'all next month.